But I also covered the level first responders and what they went through over the last 20 years that they told us was safe to go to that side and some of the cancers and.
Did you have a power outage here?
Hmm, I have.
Not here.
You didn't. We we had it all down there. I figured it was the guys. That was the guys down at the at the city sewer thing. I I can almost pinpoint because they were using all that damn machinery today for some reason. And you could almost feel it in the air that it was going to happen. And we're so close. And we've had a few power outages here in the last few months.
Yeah, I quit resetting my clocks years ago.
It's just time.
As long as you have one reliable source.
It's a construct, isn't it?
So do we? Do we have Charlie studying thinking he's gonna make it?
So if he doesn't show up, does your alternate serve or?
We only need a.
Or when only when there's not a quorum.
When there would not be a quorum to vote on quasi judicial action. So policy issues can just wait until the next meeting, but if there's a quasi judicial decision on an application where three of you are either going to be absent or conflicted on something, then we'll call in the executive member. So you have third voting member.
Okay.
Let's get started. Call the meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome. Good to see all your bright and smiling faces. Ben, you want to go through the meetings process procedures for us as we get started?
Yep, mechanics. In person, please raise your hand, get the chair's attention or contribute online, either raise your virtual hand using Zoom, using the function on the screen, or if you're on the phone by pressing star nine, star six on the phone will unmute. The chair has the authority to cut you off after three minutes, or if there are continued disruptions to ask you to leave the meeting or to just close the meeting entirely. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you.
I love I love the duck.
Mary's performing voice here?
No, no, it's a time lapse.
A little lag?
Yes, so you could. Simple minds, simple pleasures.
Glad we can entertain you.
I can entertain myself.
Let's go to our general public comment period for those items that are not on the agenda. Mary.
Thank you, Mary Repard from Stevenson. I just wrote a check for my water rates. It does not make me happy. $153.50. You know, I realize that we all need to contribute, but I'm fairly sure that all of us are not going to contribute $12 million for the new sewer plant. So I'm just wondering why our water rates keep going up. I know I'm I'm spewing today or venting tonight. I will tell the city council too. And and I don't understand if we have taxpayer monies already going for the sewer plant, why our rates keep going up like they do every six months, apparently. Secondly, I got a very, very nice email from staff. Carolyn sent me, Sorek sent me a a thing about the trees and I totally appreciate it. Her reply, it kind of clarified some things in my head, but I really would urge the city and planning commission when we're doing this. Trees make a statement for a city. They're they're like your first look that somebody gets at your city. And when we first started chopping down trees because they were 20 year cycle, you remember the furor that erupted in in our community. And I was not the only one. There were a lot of people who were upset. So I wrote back to her that if we're going to replant these trees, they need to be 15 year trees, 15 year old trees. And scientifically, that makes more sense. We're looking for shade and they will grow faster and age faster and provide more shade for the community. But also they will be carbon sequesters. And there's plenty of science behind the fact that trees do not begin to sequester carbon at least there until their 15th year. And then from that, it progresses on. That's why old growth trees are such great carbon sequesters. Second, thirdly, I don't know who's on the homeless housing council and, you know, and a planning probably needs to, we spoke about climate change two sessions ago when I brought that to you. I hope you put that on your calendar. But homeless housing is also part of it. I'm on the homeless housing council appointed by Skamania County. And there's two bills, 1388 and 1389 that are in the state legislature now addressing the issue of affordability. And the one glaring, glaring data point that is missing from all of that is how many houses? Well, first, the Colombian has reported that Washington State is 40% rentals in housing. 40%. That's obscene. We should have homeowners, not renters. And this, the thing in the bills that they never talk about or question, how many homes are there actually in the inventory that are owned by LLCs, corporations and investors, hedge funds, et cetera? And that should be determined. You know, why should the the taxpayers of America be paying for affordable housing? That's going to be snatched up in the next financial crisis by investors. You know, housing is a human right and it should be treated as such in policies. So I know that there are some moves afoot to make so many, so much percentage of any development be affordable housing. It's a, it's like a quarter or something. I I think that number should be 50%, if not more, and diversified housing. So thank you very much. That's my vent for tonight.
When you talk to Carolyn Sorek about trees, what was your concern? I guess I.
Because they chopped down a tree right there by River View. And when I looked at the rings, and I wasn't the only one that was looking, it looked like a very healthy tree. The rings were, there was no rot or anything in it. And so, and I had spoken to Ben, I think for the past few years about trees. And when when all those trees were cut for the 20 year cycle, we, that was changed. So the city got an arborist to come in and do that evaluation. And then I saw the pink ribbons along Rock Creek. I don't know if you've seen them, which means those trees are going to come out, which they do need to because they are actually not doing well. They were planted at the wrong time of the year. They were not maintained properly. They were not watered. Their root system didn't never took. So that's why you have a lot of these trees that have fracked trunks. And that, so yes, those kinds of trees, they're open to infestations and other bad things happening to them. But our, the trees in our community make a difference in our community. They make it more welcoming. They provide us with shade. They drop the temperature of the sidewalks and other things. So I think we need more trees. And also, there are places where trees were never planted, specifically in front of Monica's house. And those places need to be filled in too.
I don't know Monica's.
Oh, down on First Street. I think there's a couple of places there that. Yeah. So, you know, hopefully this next round will have a maintenance program. The trees will be planted properly and they will be older. So they can have a better chance of survival.
Addressing your concerns on that, I got notice about the tree in front of the bank saying that it's not well. And the, we had, we went through a whole thing and hired a, an arborist or a company last, last year.
Yeah.
They did an inventory and I don't know if it's available.
No, it is. I think I have it and that. But like I say, the rings looked very healthy. So I don't know what was bad about it, but that kind of spurred me for my comments that I sent in asking. And 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 those pink ribbons, because there's a lot of them on Rock Creek and then in some other parts of the city too.
I remember in 2015, we lost a lot of trees with a big ice storm. So I would, I would, I would put forth getting a hardy variety as well.
Well, I think we would need to be looking for something that would be adaptable in terms of what we're seeing. I just read an interesting study coming out of Oregon State University. Notes that the trees that we're seeing now that are in decline are largely, it's not so much a result of drought as it is low humidity and high temperatures. These trees, natural mechanisms to cool themselves and maintain their systems through their own transpiration has been declining. And so if you look around our community, I was out survey, we're seeing a lot fatalities. They're saying in the next 30 to 40 years, you won't have any Western red cedar stands except in the very northern part of the state. Which is sort of a characteristic tree in terms of our state. So I know we're looking at doing some water station work on some land associated with we're starting to plant more. So so, yes, I agree, Mary. I think the trees are important. I wrote the initial tree grant for the city back in the 80s. And it was a fun project. And I I agree. I think it really softens the the city basin body.
Susie Imson wanted to do a a tree inventory for a brochure of historic trees in our communities. I remember her talking about it in the 90s. And of course, some of the trees have have gotten by the wayside, but we do have some historic trees still in the community. And would be nice to keep them going. Trees last way longer than human beings.
And I think too, oftentimes folks will remove a tree and they'll plant a tree, but they won't see what they removed within their lifetime. So.
Yeah.
But trees do take maintenance. They do take care, particularly in a urban setting.
Yeah. Especially a street setting like we have without abutments and other things. So that's just something to consider.
Okay. Does the city success plan have landscaping in it?
Was not part of the story.
Okay.
But I think it's kind of a natural, right? In terms of the, you know, even some of the schematics that we saw, I think they all reflected, you know, trees.
And the report that was noted here, he'd evaluated the root systems, the trunks, the tree from top to bottom, really. And so gave where trees could be saved or their health could be improved. There are recommendations in there to area the soils and to to address them at that level to protect the trunks from sun scald and improving to keep the can use. So it is part of it. And that was all part of resetting how we were managing the tree resource downtown. So it was laid bare after losing so many of them all at once during the ice storm. How beneficial they were for the downtown feel and past practices weren't acceptable to the community.
And I think oftentimes you feel if you planted a tree, you're done. And I think I think it's Mary was noting, I think, as she went to Ben, it takes an ongoing maintenance program. Maintain those trees.
Yeah, was the, was the water ever turned on on Rock Creek along the landscaping? Because there's pipe, there's like pipes. But I don't think it was ever turned on. That's why they lost those bushes by the Grange and some other things. No. You have to let them in?
Ben? Good. Well, our next item. Election of the Chair and Vice Chair. So let's open it to that answer, which you're in vice.
I'd like to make the nomination. Nominate our current chair.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. They will continue to serve. If that's your preference. How about our Vice Chair though?
Everybody's looking at August.
I've made my.
Well, I'll nominate August for Vice Chair.
I will second. Okay, so we have the nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. Are there any further nominations? With that, all those in favor of the nominated candidates, please say aye.
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 Opposed? You're opposed, Charlie? Is that what I heard?
No, 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 that was aye. Write that off to bad audio. No, that was aye.
Fair enough. Okay, we're through with that. Let's move on to our minutes for our December 12 meeting. If you've all had a chance to take a look at those, any comments, thoughts, minutes changes?
Looked great to me. A move approval.
Question, Charlie. You've got a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That delay is getting to us, Charlie.
Speak carefully.
I guess I have to hang that one there. You can vote. You can still vote on that too. I'm I'm with everybody else then.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay, new business parking determination. Ben?
Your zoning code includes a table of off-street vehicle parking requirements. And the number of uses that are in that table are limited with the caveat saying that another uses are proposed, then that information will make a determination of that. Not been something that we've been good at implementing. It's something I want to get ahead of, in advance of more of the city sewer improvements throughout town, specifically more of the pump stations and being able to address whether parking is required for utility and communication facility. I'm suggesting that you parse that out as staffed and unstaffed utility and communication facilities and make a determination tonight that unstaffed requires zero off-street parking spaces and even determination for staffed facilities in the future, but one one might be. Ben?
What would staff people find that?
Where it may be the morning rallying point before going off to maintain or something. So the facility that's on First Street, which is a staff one that's there frequently monitoring switches, picking up supplies, going out to do maintenance.
Jeff, I think this suggestion, Ben, this is, this makes sense to me that, you know, if it's epis-
We lost you, Charlie, but I think we get to.
Exotic parking, if it's occasional parking, you know, however you want to describe it, you know, requiring a a full space to the time is is overkill. Did that not come through? I might need to close off my video.
Good.
Other thoughts on this?
Is that better? Sorry about my connection.
It's fine. We, you know, you were okay before. It just it paused there for just. Other thoughts on this? This didn't seem pretty straightforward, Ben. I I must admit, I mean, I don't think we need our parking space. It wouldn't bother or whatever. The pump station.
Be different if there was an office. But by asking the staff.
So what do we need to vote on on this? You said the one part.
Direction. I've got a draft determination that's attached to that page nine. So a motion to adopt the determination as well.
I would motion to adopt the determination.
Second it.
You've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
There's no, nothing to be. There's no negatives in this anywhere.
Now, wait, we have to sit and think about that.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Charlie. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. And I, I'm still trying to think of when we would ever see a man that was staffed.
Not manned.
I stand, I stand correct. Okay. All right, subcommittee reports.
So this is me handing it over to you all as it's like we need to get into staff's reports for what's going on in those different segments. Obviously, here, if I do with that. But wanted to give you guys the opportunity to share too.
Well, we can start with parking. Ben invited me to a city council meeting regarding, I was going to be discussing this and I was out of town last week, so I couldn't go. So do you want me to defer back to you regarding that?
Okay.
That'd be great.
So the city council has started doing mid-month workshops where they can, I get training on various things that affect their jobs. Or do deep dives on topics that they don't have an opportunity to dive deeply into during their business meetings. So this latest one was a deep dive into parking and we did that deep dive. It was characterized in the context of the tragedy of the commons, which is this I know theory that says that's common ownership. When there is common ownership, the users of that will exploit it to the point where it's unusable for all. And so parking, parking regulations, in addition to many of the other regulations that we deal with, are all rooted in that, avoiding the tragedy of the commons. And so I, it was giving them the familiarity with that, how some of our existing regulations play into that. I stole a quote from you and used it many times, that all models are wrong, so we're useful. And so even the tragedy of the common model itself is wrong, but it's useful in assessing the parking solutions that are going to come to them. Those parking solutions are going to be more comprehensive than we dealt with the last time it was in front of the planning commission. The last time it was in front of the planning commission was looking at specific uses and turning down the amount of requirement that we had for those uses in the downtown area. We can continue to look at that at this level, but we're also going to be looking at what happens then. So if there's less on-site parking that's going to be available, there's going to be a greater demand for on-street parking. And particularly overnight on-street parking where there's largely a prohibition of that throughout the downtown. And so figuring out a system that works better is something that we're working on closely with Public Works Department to see how much maintenance they need, they have on downtown, which is really one, one of the drivers for having that overnight prohibition. Another driver had been to prevent long haul truckers from parking our downtown streets overnight and leaving the truck on, noisy and smelly. A lot of that problem's been taken care of by the pullout that's now on the other side or in the middle of Ash Lake, middle of Ash Lake. So looking at that as part of the solution, looking at a fee in lieu of onsite parking. So developers who want to build a building and say that building is going to require 10 spaces, off-street spaces, they'll have an option of building a parking lot that has 10 spaces in it or paying into a city fund so the city can add 10 spaces to the inventory. We have started identifying parking improvement plan and putting costs to those parking improvements so that we have an idea of what a space would cost. And that's the value that we'd be using.
I'm catching up with Ben tomorrow morning, so that will be helpful for me.
Great. In in relation to that, the problem with the city doesn't actually own property. So acquiring a property to add those to is an extra expense. So it's it's another issue in itself.
An extra expense and potentially a significant timeline too.
Right. And so, I mean, they would have to be, you know, depending if we saw a big boom in construction, the lag between the actual part of being provided and what they were opting to pay out of could potentially cause a problem down there. I've been wondering about that on the realignment. And if we get around to that, I'm pretty, you know, will there be parking issues there that we have to address? I mean, that's, you know, they'll keep going to do what they want. Right?
Ben, I'm not familiar with some of the statutes that may come to play here, but could the city, using its own resources or rent resources, acquire the land, build a parking lot or an offsite parking lot? And then as new businesses come in, sort of recapture costs? And we do that a little bit in some of the other utility areas. Is is that approach something that could work?
It is something, and that would be, that would provide much more known costs to apply to the fee instead of estimates that we have for potential projects. Some of the potential projects, well, one of the potential projects would be an off-street lot, a new municipal lot. And so getting the cost for that. But there are projects in the draft parking improvement plan that restripe to capture more spaces along the block front that can. And so there's a minor cost. And then there's one that identifies a oh, a fire hydrant that's is taking up a parking space that if there were moves 15 feet closer to a driveway, that would be the same. We're doubling the amount of space is lost because of the location of the fire hydrant. And so that's one space, one of the concepts for. One of the concepts for. And I think that this won't work, but one of the concepts that we're evaluating is on Vancouver right here. Currently, the parking lane is on the south side of the street. Flopping it to the north side of the street is going to avoid off the several. Driveways for the county offices, and you would capture that space along the current front for parking. However, it would result in a traffic pattern that puts more pressure on Russell and Second Street intersection. Which is already borderline for a level of service, so if that traffic pattern were to add to that, it would need to be evaluated before. Moving forward with that, but there are ways, there are creative ways that are not just an off-street lot. But it's very likely.
Most municipalities have available land that the city actually owns.
Mary, would you like to contribute to this conversation?
Well, I, you're talking about downtown, well, I care about our downtown, but there are the issues with parking. Specifically about some of the new developments and I'm going to go back to Lasher. And those homes that were built there, the townhomes, whatever they are. And they, those folks, even though, they have two or three cars. So they're, they're parking on Vancouver Avenue, even though if they park on their, in their driveway and. From now on, I don't think it should be allowed that your driveway is so short that your car sticks out into the street. You should be able to park your car in your driveway, so that does not stick out in the street. I was coming down Lasher the other day and the first house there, there were two cars. And one of them was sitting out like a foot or plus into the road, well, another car was coming uphill, so I had to stop. To, because I could go in my lane, because there was a car rear sitting in my, in the street. So, you know, those kinds of things are irritating, but they should not, they should not be allowed to be built. If they don't have enough space there, they should, yeah, well, you know, and then also.
Proactively fix something that's already happened.
Well, I know, but I was talking for the future and then the, where the road narrows as it goes around to Rock Creek. Somebody painted that white line, because we talked about this when they were building those new houses, those two new houses. Well, that makes that lane very narrow. And if somebody parks at the very end of that, of the parking spaces. You're in there, you're right next to them if you're passing them, because the people in the next lane come, going east are in their lane. So that needs to be fixed, it needs to go back to where it was where it was not as narrow. And, you know, and there might be parking there as you go toward, behind the county buildings. But parking for homes is also an issue and it should be included in this conversation. I don't care if people park on Vancouver Avenue, but they've got garages. And they're still parking on Vancouver Avenue.
That's a misconception.
Yes, I know. But, you know, at least have a driveway where you can park safely and that, so that's it.
You know, I, we try to grapple with parking issues, I go back to that. Statement that all models are wrong and some are useful, I don't think you can find a perfect solution. You know, I, I look at what we have on Second Street coming through down, and how many times I have to stop because someone has their door open. Or I'm trying to get out of the A and J parking lot and I can't see because someone's parked his. You know, those are difficult situations to deal with, and we know that the travel lanes on Second. I mean, that right away is, is narrow, it's much different than it is down on First, which was basically reconstructed. But I don't know, unless, I don't think we're going to take part in muffin, those second. But it's, you know, it can be a challenge at times coming through there, you have to be careful in terms of what's.
Well, that's why you take a left and then you go around the antique store and go on First Street or the other way, if you can't make that left.
I do that frequently.
I'm surprised John hasn't made some kind of a deal with us with that vacant lot right there. I don't know what he has planned for development wise, but hasn't done anything with it for good five years.
What, the main street, by Main Street? Is that his?
Yeah. I talked to him at one time about putting something there. City council voted him down.
And your easiest bet would be to put a parking garage right behind a courthouse.
The other issue with Second Street is the speeding. You know, and that's, I mean, I've looked in my mirror and get ready to open my door and it's not safe, you know, that's kind of a sub-issue. People aren't quite going 25 miles per hour.
Well, you deal with the trucks coming through too, because those westbound trucks are going to come straight through. These bound trucks oftentimes do take the first street cut off, it's not convenient for your westbound traffic, so you still have all those westbound trucks. There doesn't seem to me to be an easy solution to that. Cities grappled with trying to make those one-way couplets and that just doesn't get much traction, certainly within the business community. Charlie, anything you want to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I agree about the couplet solution, that's, that's really hard to implement and probably. Has more negative side effects than positive effects. You know, I think in general, the direction that the, the commission and the council and staff have taken with respect to parking. You know, the small issue that we dealt with tonight is to, to not, to not overdo it. You know, my experience with parking in, you know, large and small cities is that, you know, people figure it out. And if there's, if there's a reasonable inventory of total spaces and people are parking legally. It's better to keep the total inventory a little tight. I know that may sound kind of academic, but that's, that's been my experience. So, you know, for example. Us not requiring parking for these utility uses, one more little, one more little step of. Keeping that inventory reasonable and not having too much of the, of the city occupied by parking.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of streets.
You know, there's an expression in real estate that form follows parking, not form follows. Function, well, I don't think we want that form.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, but we have, we have some and it's almost never fully occupied.
And I don't think we want to develop parking lots on our main thoroughfares, I mean, that's, that's our commercial space. So you have that push-pull, I think in terms of how to deal with that. I'm glad we're at least trying to focus on some improvements out there, so.
So did your traffic study or your parking study actually say you needed parking?
Parking study largely didn't. The usage as was recorded on two days in September of 2021 largely said, no, parking is not an issue. Some of the block faces or some of the lots were above this 80 threat, 85% threshold, which is treated as this magic number for. You have, if parking usage is more than that, then the perception is that parking isn't available. And the public wants more parking. If it is 80, less than 85% or at 85%, then the perception is that there's parking available. For users and you don't yet need to invest in new parking solutions for those areas. If it's less than 85%, then you really don't need to invest and if it's under this threshold, then you've over invested and are waiting to recruit.
In September.
In September, and so it's the only day.
Not a high volume time of year.
It's the only day we have, the study is reputable, should we have the volunteer or.
That would be a.
Or the appointed person. July would be great.
Sounds like maybe a Saturday planning commission work session.
Well, I suspect most of your parking is in front of restaurants. Parking issues. And that's 65 feet that people don't want to walk more than to get to the restaurant.
They're now playing hard all day, they don't want to walk.
Some of the solutions to that problem that we're dealing with is where you have all these green block faces where there's.
Plenty.
Plenty of parking. A block and a half away from a red block face is to make sure that signage is available and plenty of people there. The next step in that is monitoring, metering the red block faces so there's turnover and people finding the green ones. We won't get to that step for quite some time, but that.
Well, yeah, if you can't park in front of a lot of the restaurants, you really don't have to go that far to park in spite of this, that's been my experience. I mean, you might have to go around the corner and park, but.
You can talk to the bank, maybe they'll, you know, Uncle Bank, maybe after hours, after 5:00 PM or 5:30 PM. Like people can park in their parking lot, which they do anyway.
Okay, what about the shoreline access?
So I, I haven't actually spoken to anybody about that and where we are on the matter, so I need to get up to speed. I think Ben and I are having, or I think I'm going to a meeting or something, was it Wednesday or Wednesday and Thursday? So I'm going to get up to speed, I got a copy of the plan here, I'll have it back and forth out of town when we get there.
Consultants are busy at work. Analyzing the current shoreline environment to understand whether there are gaps, whether there are gaps that should be filled, whether there are gaps that can't be filled. Without some significant environmental impact. And as part of their process, they've got a public open house on Wednesday night that's scheduled from 5:00 to 6:00 at the library. You are invited to come to that. The open house is just that, it's an open house, drop in, consultants will be there to discuss their, their maps, their understanding of the shoreline environments. And give public input to truth what they're seeing or surface other ideas or other issues. And then on Thursday morning, they'll follow that up with more of a focus group review to. Say what they learned at the workshop, what they've been learning through their analysis. That focus group will be populated by Davey representing you all, shoreline property owners. Shoreline recreationalists, particularly Columbia River Wind Sports. And. That's all, as far as representation groups, Ben, I've been meeting with. Shoreline property owners, potentially effective interest to, to give them their update on just what this project is, what the outcomes are. And then feeding that information back to the consultants so that they understand the political environment as well as the habitat environment. To the geologic environment that they're looking to, so. It's coming together on that and they should still be on schedule to deliver us. Their contract requirements this spring, late spring before summer.
For which shorelines are they evaluating?
Shorelines are Rock Cove, Rock Creek and Columbia River, so.
In the last time we, we talked about this, there was, there was a question as to what was, how was the port participating in this? Are they an active participant or?
Yeah, I'm meeting with Pat on Wednesday about it, so what's. What the focus of the project is, or how I characterize it, is that the state is the one that requires the shoreline management plan of us. And as they set up their requirements for the shoreline management plan, they have the city of Bellevue in mind, they have the city of Tacoma in mind. Where there's a great deal of permanent volume activity. And so when they say plan for and increase public access, what's passed down to us are ways where you can review a permit to increase public access. Here, we don't have a high permit, so we just wait for permit proposals to come in. We're never going to get a network of shoreline access requirements. And so that's where this plan fills in, it'll give the ideas for what shoreline access is. It'll give us capital improvements and budget and cost estimates so that we can start budgeting to do it proactively. And then it will identify where there is adequate access and property owners that have that need to maintain it. And as long as they're maintaining it, they're on. Pathway A through the, the permit process in front of you guys, there would be two or three criteria to meet, and so the current. Eight or 10 criteria that they need to do, so.
I noticed that we've, we've dropped the word trails from there, are we still considering that as part of the?
So is the county involved?
Well, one of this sort of came up through the trespass issues going down Falls on Rock Creek. Not that there wasn't planned or developed access areas, or the lack of access in certain areas that were attracting people. So I assume that gets wrapped in the, in this.
I still have a very viable idea for that, but I don't know if it's in the cards right now, it may be further down in the future. Didn't I mention that?
Okay. And that open house is Wednesday at the library?
Wednesday at the library, 5:00 until 7:00.
How was that published? I was.
We sent mailers to all the shoreline property owners, we put it on the city's Facebook page. We should have something in the Pioneer tomorrow slash Wednesday. And then we did direct outreach to disadvantaged populations under certain communities by. Having it put on the door, that's two of our.
And the focus group meeting?
Focus group meeting is the following morning at 10:00.
Okay, is it here?
It'll either be here or at what? Would you like to go in?
No, thank you, I have too many meetings.
What are the hours?
Annexation policy, oh boy. We sort of kicked that off. Yeah, Charlie, you might.
Start that report, Jeff?
Yeah, if you are, you might want to go off on your video, because you do break up. Either that or you're going to have to set the wine aside.
Well, yeah, it'd probably improve the meeting if I turn my video off. Okay, so I would say my characterization of this, and I think Jeff and. Well, yeah, it'd probably improve the meeting if I turn my video off. Okay, so uh I would say my characterization of this, and I think Jeff and Ben, you had a way into it. I make my characterization is we made a start. Um, uh, but I think we're a little flummoxed by um, at least as of the information before I left town and. Have been a little out of touch. So I may not be current, Ben, but uh a little flummoxed by um our. Unrequited offer uh to the county to collaborate with us on this. Uh, we had a, we had a meeting back in January that Jeff and Ben and I had. Tended and we had participation from county staff. Um, and I guess there've been some changes at county um that might have precipitated delay. But um I guess I'm I'm sort of voicing a concern here that we uh wanted to do this as a, at least a collaboration with the county. And I I'm not sure where that stands. Uh, meanwhile, I'm more positive note. Uh, you know, one of the city council members, Michael Johnson, has expressed an interest in participating in this with us. That's great. This is annexation is. You know, one part technical about services and zoning and and all the rest of the stuff that we're. You know, naturally focused on at the planning commission. It's one part policy and politics. How much does the leadership of the. City want to grow and how fast and 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 uh and how well should the city recover its costs and. Burdens that go with that annexation. Some of that, some of that stuff is, you know, fundamentally policy that the mayor and the. Council members need to be engaged in as well. So uh, and I think we've made a start in this, this big, you know, kind of meaty discussion. But we, I'd like to be hearing more from our partners at the county. And and again, maybe you have while I've been away.
Ben, any, any update on that?
No updates. So I wouldn't call it uh completely unrequited, but not yet requited. And yeah, as as they get re-staffed up. For changes there, they uh the one of the commissioners instead of this um. Interested in having us get together with them.
At the county commissioner.
County commissioners. Uh, at the uh subcommittee level, we talked a little bit about our needs. Um, one of those was a better understanding of. Densities and what density uh is permitted in city limits and outside of city limits. And so. We are working uh with our G I S consultants to get those maps in place there. They didn't have all of the base mapping that they needed uh to produce our requests. So they're trying to get some of that and and then turn it on some drafts, so. That's not not quite yet ready, but we'll have that as a uh comparison tool to use. Uh, when we have a discussion. But I think we need to, at that subcommittee level, sit down. Really understand our goals and and what we believe the subcommittee's responsibilities to you all are.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things that I thought was really important was just gathering some of that basic information. And that that goes back to. The mapping certainly. What do we see within the city and what do we see within the county? You know, I've been out just kind of sort of exploring, looking around. And I think it's gonna be important to look not just at the physical characteristics of that land just outside the the city limits. But to look at how it's currently utilized and in some ways almost committed. To to certain land uses, uh maybe committed to, you know. Say either five acre lots in a fairly high density, you know. That not, that may something, may something that we just. Uh, you can't change. It's there. Uh, you know, if you annex that, you're not. Gonna annex it and move it to higher density because it's already pretty well flatted and. And marked out. And there's a surprising amount out there when you get out and start looking at some of these lands. To move those lands rejoiced into the county. And yet, when we look at what that might mean for the city, you know, I think Charlie sort of believed that is. Is providing city services to a very low density area. If you've got an area that is, say. Two to five acre lot sizes and you annex that. The the cost of extending water or maintaining streets becomes, becomes higher. And and how do you do that? Do we, do we look at improvement districts where those property owners assume that? So. There's just a lot of information I think we need. Rather than just sort of blindly saying, well, this looks like a good annexation policy. So.
I think fourteen twenty-five and the state legislature deals with some kind of a task. You can get back, if you annex somebody. Uh, fourteen twenty-five, I wasn't following yet, but we discussed it. And there are a number of bills about densities. Uh, and housing, uh and and lots too. Uh, how you can get like two thousand square foot lots in certain areas.
Most of those statutes.
In bill.
Apply to cities that are larger than than Stevens.
Yeah, they don't do under the G M A. Uh, uh, and we don't plan under a G M A here. But uh, Skamania County does do natural resource planning under the G M A.
Yeah, I I think the the issue that I've seen in some of the bills that I've been following, including on eighty U's and on regulatory street line. Generally are implying that, you know, communities, cities of ten thousand doesn't relate to. Uh, to to G M A. Uh, there's also a bill out there that's starting to talking about. Eighty U's outside of urban growth areas. But again, I'm not quite sure. How that, how that would relate to our situation down here. You know, most of those. Most of those bills are a response to what they're seeing within metropolitan areas. In Puget Sound, to some extent within Clark County, but. Yeah, I just. It'll be interesting to see what comes out, but I don't, I don't, most of the bills I've seen, Ben, in terms of land use. Are not gonna have much impact or much direction, direct requirements of what the city decides to steal.
I think the last time we discussed this, it had to do with a petition from somebody on, is it uh Guide Meridian?
The property was on Frank Jones.
Um, did that get resolved or what happened?
City council um rejected the notice and so it did not proceed to the petition phase.
So I think there's work this.
So. Say in terms of next. Yeah, uh in that terms and next steps on that, Ben, do you have a a rough idea? When we might uh be able to get that map?
It's, no, I don't. Um, but rough idea.
Am I coming through all right, guys? I'm sorry about my connectivity issue here.
It's okay. Next week is my current hope for that. Uh, this week. Last week, not the end of this week.
Is there any way we could have some kind of a working group with the with the county and before we go to the whole planning commission? I guess. If you want staff first to sort of sit down and start laying out at least the steps we want to take to get in. Does that sound reasonable, Charlie?
That's exactly what I'm hoping we could do with with the counties. Allman, yeah. As to me. I guess.
Can he call in?
I'm sorry, did that not come through? Uh, I'm sorry about my. With here. I've been obvious. Uh, you know, guy. And then.
I think you got Charlie. I think as you travel. Let's go to staff and commission reports.
Well, Tiffany Anderson has been sitting here very patiently and trying to understand what what she's got put herself into uh as of today.
I'd like to reconsider.
Uh, reopen the negotiations.
She's joining us as the planning and public works assistant. And so this is um. New position with the city. Uh, we have been in need of additional staff supports and. Finally got that uh this year, identified uh. Uh, job duties that are gonna really spread the weight of of running city hall, round city hall, uh quite a bit better. And so Tiffany will sort of some duties that I'm currently doing, some that Carolyn are currently doing, some that Anders are currently doing, some that Mary are currently doing. Uh, a new member of the team. It should be a very good one. On the planning side, uh she will. Uh, function uh often as a uh first line of the public is in getting the application materials in place. And then routing those application materials onto um various review departments. And she has the nice.
So then they know who to call.
Tiffany, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, gosh, um, where's started? I have been in the title industry for about eight years and um. Prior to that was in mortgage for. About twenty. So I was very, very young when I got started um in transitioning uh into. I wanted to kind of transition away from from that volatility. And it seemed like a really good fit. It could use the majority of my. My background, so it was a a nice fit. I live in North Bonneville. Don't hold that against me. I'm sorry. Shop here. Hey, we have a deli. Um, I'm originally from Louisiana. Uh Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge.
Yes.
I lived in New Orleans.
You did, what part?
Uh, in Slidell.
And Slidell?
Yeah, Slidell and then East New Orleans.
I lived on Chapatuas.
Chapatuas, there you go.
Chapatuas.
I miss commanders.
Miss commanders, yes. I just took my, I was telling. Helen, Ben, I took my son to the Jazz and Heritage Festival last year. It was the first one since COVID and. He was, he's really big into music. So when we we went for the whole two weeks and, oh, man, it was amazing.
Ben Yee is.
Oh, of course.
Undoey.
Undo, duck and undo, duck, duck and undoey gumbo.
What is it? Lip on?
Thank you.
Let the good times roll. Yeah, there's nothing like Ben Yee.
Take anything frodded and.
I have to get some for me every mother's day. Uh, I get to have crawfish.
Did you go to Benedict?
Benedict down there? In the quarter? I don't know, possibly. I have not, no.
I know it's changed a lot since Katrina.
Yeah, a lot.
Welcome, Tiffany.
Well, we'll expect uh some treats.
King cake. Hey, I'm actually baking one of those. My son is having a Mardi Gras party Friday night. It's apparently a good choice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, oh, there you go. Oh, nice. Well, I don't know. Bama or Auburn.
Like, can you tell us about broadband, Ben?
Broadband has become, broadband uh is on the city council's priority list. It has not been in this quarter of this year, this half of this year. But the need and the opportunity have struck. And so it's something that I'm squeezing in with the other projects. Um. Working, the the opportunities that have come up are. Uh, one technical assistance grant from the state broadband office that will look at broadband projects. And this fills a a very big gap um that we had the last time we looked at broadband in twenty eighteen. Where uh understanding the systems was treated in a very proprietary sense. Uh, and so. Developing a project often relied on picking a broadband partner, ISP as a partner and then applying for funding. But we couldn't get to that point where we even knew how to evaluate partnerships because we didn't know the systems. Much of that um will be removed this time around through this technical assistance grants. Um, and so we are partnering with Skamini County. To to partner with the broadband office to to produce that. Um, we're asking for their partnership and the follow-up. With how that's going. And then also in advance of a great deal of federal funding through the bipartisan infrastructure law. The. Washington State University Extension Service is uh developing programs and providing uh technical assistance grant funding. To uh. Do a similar needs assessment for the physical infrastructure that's on the ground, but also our community's ability to access that infrastructure. With the heavy focus on equity, digital equity. And so where um. Where are there affordability barriers or access barriers for people who can't afford it? That's, there's a program in the. Washington State University has developed a rubric to follow. And then um there's fundings for jurisdictions to follow that. And so that one is another partnership with Skamini County and Mid-Columbia Economic Development Districts. Uh, who's been the regional leader uh organizing all these broadband, so.
When they're uh funding available in that Biden plan or?
That's part of it. And so this identifying the gaps, identifying the needs. Uh, will be something that moves forward at the state level for our plan, which then goes to the feds for. Funding cycles, something hitting in now to show that there is a need so that. Funding will be devoted this way or made available for us when when it's available. That's what that for this. Both of those are um first two quarters of twenty twenty-two.
I thought we somebody in Gorgon that they were, they were a little miffed. Said they got left out of. Negotiations in the area.
How could they be left out?
It'll be interesting to see how this works out. I mean, I understand. You the desire to, you know, for the equity, you know, the cost down. But I think a lot of these rural communities, and you don't have to get far outside of downtown Stevenson. Before internet service. Is pretty lousy. Whether you can afford it or not. You know, and I, and I'm, you know, I'm I'm hopeful as as we go through this process that. You know, it's something that looks at how important that service is to this, to this community in terms of what we see with regard to that. What everyone's doing online now in terms of work, in terms of healthcare.
Education.
Education, shopping. I mean, it's become in my mind almost. Uh, a necessary utility, just like water and and electricity.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't be passive. We need a public utility, internet publicly na- nationally. I mean, it has, we're, we're way past luxury in that, and it is time to be equitable across the board. But there is uh through the library, you can. And that, and it is time to be equitable across the board. But there is, through the library, you can apply for like low income. Uh, well, you know, kind of help with your wifi. I tried that process. It was debilitating. Uh, they give you ninety nine providers. I know there aren't ninety nine providers in our community. Now, am I going to go through that tireless to see? And this is something from the feds. I can't remember the name of the program. It's on the front page of the library thing. And and if you make it that difficult. To apply for something, you know, I wouldn't mind paying thirty or forty bucks a month for for it, but they make it so damn hard. And it shouldn't be that hard. Our library has a great program for our community. They have hotspots. But the wait for that is like, I was sixty fifth on that list. Otherwise, I sit in the parking lot. And have my Zoom meetings. So when I don't have the hotspot at home, but there is a great, great need for it. And and as you point out, there's an economic benefit to having broadband that is. That is consistent, that is affordable.
Reliable.
And reliable. Those should be like buzzwords. And if the privates don't want to do it, then. You know, tough luck.
He's still in the government, right?
No, I live here in Stevenson. Actually, I think Stevenson should have its own wifi that we can all hook into when, if we live in Stevenson.
There's a, there's a government thing, uh, the utility. Company told me about it, where you can get thirty percent off of your internet. And they also do it for phones, too. I had a burner phone when I was running to Congress. Yeah, it was, it was a pretty good deal.
Cost is one thing, you know, you could, you could subsidize my cost, but if the infrastructure isn't in place, it doesn't do any good. So. It goes back in terms of having the service. And then, yeah, then, then if you've got folks that need that financial assistance to be able to afford it, that's something else. But if you don't have the basic infrastructure in place. It doesn't do as much good. And I think in that earlier broadband conversation, as I participated in that. There seemed to be a lot of interest by providers in the downtown area. Which you can understand because they're very modest investment. They maximize their revenues. But once you get out into the more dispersed. Services, it costs, it costs them more. And, you know, just looking at some of the internet providers in this area, some of them are. They have fewer staff now than they had a few years ago. They're relying on contractors to come in and fulfill that periodically at times. And you look at how they get gobbled up. You know, take a, take a look at CenturyLink, because the ownership of CenturyLink has changed twice in the last three years. Uh, we're not seeing a great deal of of investment there in in the long term future. We're seeing companies that are being acquired or values drained.
Well, maybe PUDs need to take on a role, a bigger role. You know, our guys keep saying, oh, it's too expensive. Well, how much is too expensive? You know, was electricity too expensive for rural areas? Well, yeah, it was. But the people wanted it, so they did initiative and then became a utility that now you would not think to. Say rural areas don't need electricity. So, you know, it's a, it's perception. We spend a lot of money on a hellacious amount of things. But if we prioritize utilities or internet utility, it would get done. And and is this study going to find out for sure? Because we, they were putting in the lines down fourteen. And and up to a stabler. And during the Obama administration, we also had broadband and fiber put in. So we've got a backbone in some areas here already. It's the, it's the last mile or that last thing to the house. That they're, that they don't want to, they being the privates that don't want to invest in.
These funding programs coming. The local jurisdiction would identify the project that's necessary to serve its citizens. Together with internet service provider, go to the state funding source to say, please give us this money.
So is Bonneville involved in that?
I.
Just thought, I thought I would mention.
Bonneville is abysmal. And I don't even think we have. I do not believe that we have most of. Any fiber related. I think. There's on some a cascade, but it doesn't, it's not network throughout the town.
Keep going, Ben.
I want to fix them up.
All these companies need to live up to their advertising instead of putting in tiny, 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 tiny. Well, sometimes you might get what we advertise, but most of the time you're not going to get it. That's disgusting. Well, there's something about tears, too.
Fully updated our planning permit applications that are available on the website. We're doing that in advance of changing to more online submitter options. So we have some online submitter options right now for building permits. Uh, in our partnership with County County for the building. Really official services. And they are going to a new program there. And there will be more options available from online submitter. And so we'll include some of our planning applications as part of that, too. So getting those. Intake protocols, input correctly into that online system will really help. Reduce Tiffany's workload to making sure the complete application is in place because the. The system will spit you out if you don't have the complete application in place.
That's hard stopping.
And the contracts for everything are just now being signed. So we haven't started on that yet, but we do hope to. I get that done before the big permitting rush of the spring and summer.
Big permitting. Rush. Yeah. That's itself. What we're seeing in the economy.
Yeah.
But Tiffany, I'm glad you're there because, you know, one of the things that that I've noticed. Permits on a variety of government. Is sending clear expectations for folks so that they know what information they need to provide. So it doesn't become, well, okay, you gave me this, but that's not really what I needed. Go back and.
Showing what the whose onus for each particular part of the permitting process is very important. This is on you for this. The timelines.
Sometimes that sort of gulf, that that. Lapse of great communications between the applicant. And the jurisdiction, the governmental jurisdiction, really becomes filled by attorneys and consultants. It just increases the costs and. Time it takes to get your permit, but. I know in working at some of the work that we've done. We've overcome a lot of the committee issues by just having folks clearly understand what it is. Is being asked of them as part of the application. I'm glad we're gonna have someone in the front desk. East Loop Road.
Um, I gave you guys. State's gas tax grant for East Loop Road we have from this corridor. Think where the the newest pavement stops at Columbia Street when we did that project in twenty ten or so.
Are they gonna address that landslide?
Not that far. So just city limits is just before the.
It's beyond Montail Terrace about.
Three hundred. Yeah. Not too far, but so we'll address that before the paving goes in. We've got a waterline project. That's left over to clean up some valves that don't go to anything or valves that are. The crew just calls it, we need to clean up that cluster over there. We don't know what's going on. So cleaning up some valve clusters here and where system meets at the bottom. Uh, that'll happen before the pavement goes in. Should be everything this year. Certainly waterline. Be this year.
You're gonna do some work up on McAvoy, too, I see.
Yeah, I didn't include that one in here, but there's a overlay project. So. New pavement on top of the existing pavements at McAvoy. And they're currently evaluating whether or not to do replace a waterline that exists underneath that.
So is Dave getting a new road?
Uh, not with state gas taxes. I'm not sure of the status of.
I guess that leaves my in the back of boy on. Anything else for us tonight, Ben?
In the fall of the month, I included a interview link, podcast link for you to review about zoning reform. Very critical of zoning as it is right now.
He was, he was. I watched it and I, it was a new idea. And I, I didn't grasp all of it. But it doesn't hurt to look at it from a different viewpoint. I don't know if y'all saw it. Yeah, it was interesting.
So what's the nature of Ben? And can you just?
The synopsis.
Give us a brief, yeah.
It's confusing in my head.
He basically says zoning is not the answer to every problem. Is that?
Yeah.
A synopsis.
Arbitrary lines is. Is titled and wrote a book about this. So zoning is all, his view zoning is arbitrary and the results are arbitrary and the communities that are created. Are also therefore arbitrary and it's not. The the solution for everything.
Does he have a solution?
Well, I think his point was that the communities grow the way they grow. But what is that word? How, how, organically? I think is the term and. That putting square lots on something that's growing organically might not be the best way of planning for your future.
Focusing on the things that are important.
Yeah.
And so instead of looking at things through minimum dense or dimensions for lot sizes, looking at the tree cover. The things that you see as.
You know, I, that's sort of in some ways kind of an age old. We used to try and push design standards as opposed to specific dimensional requirements. And while you had some folks that really liked the option, the flexibility, the design standards provided them in terms of achieving a certain. Other folks hated it because they weren't quite sure. Just tell me what it is I need to do. They wanted measure it. And so it was. It's been, it's been, it can be tough. Let's put it that way in terms of finding something that that works out there. But I like the idea of trying to build more flexibility in terms of how we do it. But a lot of people like that certainty.
Can I say that I really don't like the way Chinadere is turning out? Chinadere. Speaking of.
The terrorist neighborhood down here.
Because I, I speak to it because most of the bills and the state legislature now dealing with affordable housing and all that. And they speak also to rural character. And there's nothing rural about that place. Uh, and I, I, design standards would have been really nice. That it would fit into the rural character of our community. And they use that word a lot in the bills this year and a lot of the bills, rural character, because the rural with affordable housing being so. Minimal here in our community, there's quite a number of bills that seek to address that. So, yeah. Okay, my last one for the night.
What kind of perth you?
I'm not sure where the name came from, but.
One that's not visible, but it's between here and.
Was that why? It just looks so out of character.
People grow up and.
Next landslide.
For the community, it was true.
We could have named it Lutheran Heights, I guess, yeah.
That's true.
And I think when people move in, they have certain expectations. The services they want, how they want it laid out. A lot of folks that move here. Haven't lived in a rural. So oftentimes they bring those, those values with the. The smaller.
That's where design standards come in.
Anything else you want to share with us, Ben?
Nothing for me.
Vote for the school levy tomorrow.
Yeah, planning commission. Any last thoughts you want to share?
The vote that we quit voting on.
There's a homeless housing council meeting at one o'clock on Wednesday. If, I think we have a member, one of you, I'm not sure if it's Leanna who comes to it or not. Uh, if you're all all interested in it.
They just updated, I think they. My.
Uh, I did ever, David Wyatt, is he still involved with the tree stuff? Okay.
Anything else? Content? Something wrong. Well, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second, oh, I'll suck. See you next month.
Yeah. Happy New Year to everyone.